Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and call this Planning Commission meeting to order. Can we please have the roll call taken?
Commissioner Solis.
Here.
Commissioner Elizaldes.
Present.
Commissioner Rocha.
Here.
Chairperson Martinez.
Present.
And please note that Vice Chairperson Martinez called out sick due to illness.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Rocha, would you mind leading us?
Please stand. For your right hand over your heart, ready again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to their public protestants, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, we have a special presentation on the Historic Whittier Boulevard Vision Plan presentation. Do we have a staff member to present on that?
Yes, Chair, I'll hand it over to Javier Hernandez, who will have the presentation.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair, members of the Commission. It's a pleasure to be here. It's been a little while, certainly exciting to be back to present on a very important project that we've been working on for quite some time now. But before I get going, Rob, can I ask you to go to the very first slide, please? Oh, maybe X out of there, and then start from the beginning. I think you have to click Escape. All right, so just allow me to take an opportunity to just briefly introduce myself. My name is Javier Hernandez. I am the Director of Innovation and Communications for the City of Pico Rivera. I work on special projects, strategic initiatives, especially those of regional significance, legislative affairs, and public communications as well. So I'm going to touch a little bit on our project that we've been working on for quite some time. This dates back to right around the time, early 2021, so it was kind of like as we were emerging out of the whole COVID situation. One of the things that we were tasked by council was to really start to re-envision what the next, I guess, evolution of our city would look like, right? And so, just to touch on that, I do want to provide a little bit of background that provides very important context as to how we got to where we are today. So first and foremost, I want to briefly touch on this because this really serves as an impetus for what we have done to date. So what you see here, the dashed yellow line is the Whittier Narrows Dam. It's about three miles long from end to end. It's managed, it's owned, managed, maintained, and operated by the Army Corps of Engineers. It's been determined to be at a critical point of failure. Yes?
Can we turn on the light? Catch some big reflection here.
Oh, yeah.
This one over here. There you go.
That's a lot better. There we go. All right, so pretty simple. We have the San Gabriel River on the right-hand side. When it rains, the water, or the dam holds back the water and diverts it to the Rio Hondo, which, as many of you already are well aware, is channelized. And that channel is designed to just simply flush water all the way out to the Pacific Ocean. And so that dam is of critical importance for not just Pico Rivera, but for the entire region. In fact, if that dam was to fail, about 60% of Pico Rivera would be under about eight feet of water. So, critical importance. Well, because it's at a point of critical failure, the Army Corps of Engineers has commenced modifying that entire dam. So, long story short, they're going to widen and elevate the dam by six feet altogether. To achieve that, they have to elevate both Rosemead Boulevard and Lincoln Avenue by six feet in total. So this will be under construction for, until about 2031, they're going to start, late summer of next year is when you're going to start to see some heavy construction. Another thing that's going to happen as a result of the project is we're going to lose Rooks Road, or Avenida Vicente Fernandez. That is absolutely vital roadway that provides access to the Pico Rivera Sports Arena. So we've been having a lot of conversations with the Army Corps of Engineers, with our congressional representatives, with our senators, with the Army Corps, about replacing that road. Unfortunately, the Army Corps does not have the authorization to replace that road, so it will, we are losing that roadway permanently. And as a result, the fire department is going to render the sports arena inoperable for its intended purpose. So as you know, we have concerts, festivals, events, anywhere from four to eight thousand people any given time, you know, they host events 30 times throughout the year. And unfortunately, those types of operations are going to cease late summer of next year. On top of that, the new footprint of the dam is going to eat into very vital parks and open space in the City of Pico Rivera. So to the left, you have Streamland Park, which is home to the Pico Boys. They are going to permanently be displaced from their location that they've been at since 1956. We're going to lose our nine-hole golf course, the Pico Rivera Golf Club, all 30 acres. We're also going to lose the bicentennial park. I will say, we might get some of that land back. When I say some, it's very limited. And when we get it back, we've also learned that it's going to be extremely regulated, so it's very unlikely for us to have baseball fields, golf courses, or, I mean, trails, walking paths are probably the extent of what we'll be able to do with whatever remains. So needless to say, that puts us in a bind. The City of Pico Rivera already has very limited park space in our city, so we are tasked to figure out where we can make up for some of that lost park space in our city. Another thing that's going on, and this is more from a regional standpoint, you might be aware that the entire county of Los Angeles in Southern California is in the process of developing a regional active transportation network. We, the City of Pico Rivera, are in the process of developing our active transportation master plan. On top of that, you may have heard about what's happening on Washington Boulevard. Metro, the county transportation authority, is currently advancing plans for a light rail on Washington Boulevard. It's currently broken up into two phases. Phase one will come up to right about the border between Manabelo and Pico Rivera. Phase two will go from Pico Rivera, Santa Fe Springs, and then out to Whittier. Phase two will go from Pico Rivera, Santa Fe Springs, and then out to Whittier. On top of that, the City of Pico Rivera is currently working with Caltrans, 13 other cities from East Pasadena all the way down to Long Beach to advance what is called the Rosemead Lakewood Boulevard Bus Rapid Transit Corridor. And then on top of that, we're very fortunate in this city that we do have the LoSan Corridor that runs right through Pico Rivera. This is the same, the Amtrak Pacific Surfliner, if you're familiar with that. That's the train that goes from San Luis Obispo all the way down to downtown San Diego. One of the things that Metro is currently in the process of doing is developing a study to introduce a new station here in Pico Rivera that would be for Metrolink, Amtrak, and if feasible, also for high-speed rail. This is the same corridor that high-speed rail will eventually use to connect L.A. Union Station to the City of Anaheim. So needless to say, a lot of transformation coming to Pico Rivera. These are all projects that are in the works as we speak. Not going to spend too much time here, but I just wanted to highlight a subset of different state legislation and laws that we, at the local level, are ultimately responsible for implementing. I highlight these primarily because these are what we call unfunded mandates, where we are required to do these things, whether it's, you know, contribute to greenhouse gas reductions, to increase housing supply, things like that. But in the end, we don't have dedicated resources that come back to the city to implement these things. So it makes it very, very challenging for us to comply with these issues. So we at the city have been taking a very comprehensive approach to plan our city well into the future, kind of taking it from a district and corridor, neighborhood block and building level, and all the way down to the micro level, looking at individual spots. You may have seen some of the artwork that we've installed into the electrical art boxes, but we are undertaking very comprehensive plans for our corridors and respective districts in the city. The other reason we want to do this as well, again, I did mention that we don't necessarily get formula dollars back as a result of these unfunded mandates, but we do have an opportunity that if we indeed demonstrate that we're complying with state law and we're advancing goals at the state, federal, regional levels, we're justifying our projects and our initiatives with data, they're data-driven. One of the major requirements these days is that you do have to do an abundance of outreach and engagement with our community to drive equity outcomes. And that ultimately, ultimately helps us be competitive for grant funds. But you still have to submit grants, right? And that in and of itself is a process. And so these are all the grants that we are currently in the process of either, we've either just recently submitted or currently in the process of developing. In the last several years, we have been incredibly successful, especially for our size of a city, but we've secured over $83 million in grant funds. And we currently have about $29 million in pending grants that we're awaiting notice any day now. Pretty exciting. So with respect to Whittier Boulevard, this is the, the study area that we've been evaluating for almost three years now. As you can see, it's about 157 acres in total, mostly commercial, some light industrial, as you can see here. Very little residential and very little public space that we've been evaluating. But one thing to highlight about this particular area, and one of the reasons why it bubbled up as a major priority for our council, is because Whittier Boulevard is currently the second most dangerous street in our city. It's had over 126 collisions in the last five years, six of which have resulted in serious injury, and five that resulted in fatality. It's, the intersection of Whittier Boulevard and Rosemead Boulevard is the number one most dangerous intersection in our city. So needless to say, from a safety standpoint, we have to address those issues moving forward. So since we commenced this planning process, we have engaged over 8,000 people directly. That means eye-to-eye, face-to-face communications. We have captured over 75,000 impressions or data points at over 90 events that we've completed in the last two and a half years or so. Two of you, I know, are actively involved with our Stakeholder Advisory Group. So we certainly thank you for your participation in that. It's been very vital and important to the process. But we've also created other special groups to help inform the development of this plan. So we have the Technical Advisory Committee, our Stakeholder Group, the Blue Ribbon Committee, which comprised of our elected official offices, district directors, representatives, et cetera. And then you also might be aware that we established a Youth Ambassador Program in partnership with International Unified School District. So anyhow, we've been doing quite a bit with respect to outreach and engagement. And one of the very first things that we did, we got a Caltrans grant that kind of kicked off this entire effort. That was to develop a multimodal plan for Whittier Boulevard. That was kind of step one of this entire process. This plan has since been approved by our council back in April this year. This is a, just an illustrative example of what Whittier Boulevard looks like at the corner of Lindsay Avenue. That's where Alta Cora is on the bottom. But this is, we introduced the incremental implementation plan, considering, you know, expensive to make these types of improvements. But phase one would simply improve visibility for vulnerable road users. Just a matter of introducing paint on the roadway. And then it just kind of scales up from there, right? Making things a little bit more vibrant, a little bit more walk-oriented and pedestrian-oriented, but eventually graduating its way up to something a little bit more robust with respect to multimodal facilities along the corridor. And this is a condition that our council has approved, and that's to extend the sidewalks, which serves multiple purposes. One, to improve beautification with more trees and plants and shrubs and things like that. But at the same time, also providing for outdoor dining space for our local businesses. So that was something that was very important for the business community, as well as for the residents and stakeholders in the city. And one of the common questions that we get at almost every single event that we do is, "Oh, we're never going to see this. This is not going to happen in my lifetime." Well, one of the promises that we continue to make is that you're going to see ongoing regular progress on a year-by-year basis. This is a prime example. This is our center medians. This is what they used to look like. Whittier Boulevard, again, because of that priority, we prioritized Whittier Boulevard, and this is now what it looks like today. We are now proceeding with beautifying other major corridors, Rosemead, Telegraph, Slosin, Paramount, and others. But Whittier Boulevard was the first, right? And this is an example of what we're doing. And then the next thing we're going to be working on right now, we're currently working with our Public Works Department. We have some, a number of grants to address the conditions of these back alleys on the north side, I'm sorry, on the, yeah, the north side of Whittier Boulevard. So many of you are, you know, familiar with these as Speedway Alley. They've been notorious for illegal dumping, for speeding on Speedway Alley, graffiti, and a number of other illicit activities. So our business community, the residents in the neighborhood, and some of the major stakeholders, especially the church there, have been bringing these items to our attention. So we felt it was important to address those concerns. So with the grant funds that we got, we're introducing phase one of what we call the Los Paseos of Historic Whittier Boulevard. And the idea is to introduce artwork, some landscaping, some lighting, some signage. Speaking of signage, one of the other things that's currently in development is a branding signage and furniture master plan. Now, I'm not necessarily saying that we copy East LA. I just really show this image to illustrate that this sign here is just simply iconic, right? It's been a subject of many books and documentaries, especially now in the influencer age with social media. But the idea here is that we don't have anything like this in Pico Rivera, anything that's as iconic. And so one of the things that we're looking to do is see whether or not we can introduce that throughout the community, and not just on Whittier Boulevard, but throughout all of Pico Rivera. So then with respect to the vision plan, this is where we start diving a little bit. Everything we've done in the multimodal plan really looks at sidewalk, roadway, sidewalk, right? So the public realm, now we're looking at things within that private sector realm, right? What can happen on privately-owned land in partnership with the publicly-owned facilities and land? So identifying ways to fully integrate what happens on both sides. So the vision plan is looking at all these different elements here, right? The directive that we got from our council was to essentially create a vision that would serve as the basis for establishing an uptown district in Pico Rivera. And as many of you know, if you want that uptown experience, you don't go to Pico Rivera, right? You go to Whittier, Monrovia, Downey, Pasadena, Long Beach, other, other cities. And that's what's interesting about Pico Rivera, or especially Whittier Boulevard. When we did the analysis with respect to traffic, we found that 60% of all the traffic on Whittier Boulevard doesn't start or stop in Pico Rivera. So we're very much known for being a drive-through community versus a drive-to community. So the charge that we got from our council was to create more of a destination. So the idea here is to create something more like this. And if there's something that we learned during COVID, that's, that outdoor dining is really cool. Well, no one did outdoor dining quite worse than Pico Rivera. As a matter of fact, we had a lot of businesses that went out of business as a result of our inability to accommodate for that. We just didn't have space on our sidewalks. Very difficult for us to permit them, especially during COVID. So now we're looking at ways to accommodate outdoor dining on the sidewalk, on the back alleys, balconies, rooftops, wherever you can get some sun. So this is what the current land use and zoning looks like in, in this particular study area. I'm going to go over two different alternatives, but really focus on one in particular. Alternative two is looking at whether or not, I'm sorry, looks at what we call the HQTA, is what's called a High Quality Transit Area. So that assumes that we do not have high-quality transit being served in this area, which we currently do not. High-quality transit is defined by 15-minute service. And we don't have that on Whittier Boulevard at the moment. The next alternative looks at with high-quality transit. So if you recall back to one of the earlier slides, on Rosemead Boulevard, we're working with the region to advance a bus rapid transit corridor. That would get us to that 15-minute threshold. And that changes the dynamic quite a bit with regard to levels of density, types of land juices in and around that area, within a half-mile radius. And so in one of those first zones, one of the things that we're looking at, and this is something that we talked about at length with our community, is housing. Obviously, housing is important. We want to be able to accommodate as much as we can, but at the same time, being mindful that we need to consider a balance between traffic impacts, the current safety and, you know, the way our streets are designed and things like that. So this is one of those, Zone One, what we call, and subject to change, and certainly subject to much more community input. But this is what we call the Village Residential Zone. That really focuses more on low, medium density, I'm sorry, low-density development. The next zone is where it kind of steps up from there, and we start exploring more introduction of commercial mixed uses, right? Especially at the ground floor, but still kind of maintaining low densities. And this is primarily reserved, these first two zones are primarily reserved for the north side of Whittier Boulevard, which is a little bit more quaint. You have a lot more smaller businesses. You don't have a lot of large empty lots like you do on the north side, right? Which is where like the Burlington and Didi's and those, those parking lots and Target, et cetera. So, but then in those areas is when we started looking at the Town Residential Zone Three. Mind you, I will say, I know I'm going through this quite rapidly, but we just published the draft vision plan, which goes into much more detail on all of this. And I highly encourage you to download it, print it, or just view it online to go into much more detail. And this is strictly just an overview. And also, I invite you, if you feel it's necessary, to schedule a meeting with me. Happy to accommodate and, and go through the document in more detail individually as well. Zone Four is really where it starts to step up quite a bit more. And this, again, is reserved more for the north side. This is where you start to see higher levels of density, right? The 80, up to 80 dwelling units per acre with a maximum height of about 60 feet. And I know commissioners that joined us on our various city tours, we got to see a lot of these examples. And we went to the City of Orange, where you saw some of that low, medium-density development in a historic district. But then we also went to Pasadena, where you have much higher development. And really, the question that we had for the, for the stakeholders was, you know, what's right for Pico Rivera, right? Is eight, nine, 10 stories too high? Well, we heard loud and clear, it's definitely too high. And that's where we started to scale back. And, you know, between the outreach and engagement that we did, folks felt that anywhere between five to six stories is about the maximum that we would want to go in Pico Rivera. But then as we get closer to the rivers, where we're really focusing a lot of attention on creating activity centers along the river, or what we call riverfront activity hubs, we're focusing a lot of attention on kind of master planning the rivers as well. We're going to be undertaking that effort in the near future as well. But this allows us an opportunity to kind of kick-start that visioning process for the rivers as well. Zone Six really focuses on publicly available parks and open space versus parks and open space that's accessible to the public, but not quite owned by the public, right? It's on private land. In this particular case, we're looking at a number of new parks throughout the city. And I'll show you a couple of examples of that in just a little bit. But this is what Whittier Boulevard looks like today, if you're just looking at it from a bird's eye view. You fast-forward 15 years, if indeed this is the vision that's to be adopted by our council, you know, given market conditions, technical planning work, infrastructure enhancements, things like that. This is potentially what it could look like in 15 years, if you're just kind of building it out with Legos. But then if you look at it 30-plus years out, you know, you could start to see that the area really starts to transform. And what does that look like up close? So this gives you an example, again, you got Mario's Tacos on the bottom there, the Shaky's Pizza that they're currently working on. But you see the empty surface parking lots? One of the other things that we did as part of our study, or that we identified, excuse me, is that any given point in the day, the parking lots are about 40% occupied. So there's just a lot of underutilized land on any given day. And so the next thing is, can we make better use of that land, right? And so again, this is just an example to show a maximum build-out scenario using Legos. Again, up to three, four stories on the north side, but it gets a little bit taller on the north, on the south side. And then if you start adding kind of like layers of design, you know, then it starts looking more like this. And this is not final, this is just subject to further outreach and input from the community, but just to kind of give you an idea of what things could look like if indeed this is the vision for Pico Rivera and Whittier Boulevard. So really quick, parks and open space is very, very important because I mentioned how much we need parks and open space in the city. Now, one of the things I'll highlight is that Pico Rivera, as you already know, is very built-out. So coming across large swaths of land is very difficult. And even if we did, that land is very expensive. You know, purchasing that land, let alone setting aside the resources to build a brand-new park and then to program it and maintain and operate it indefinitely, obviously, there's an expense associated with that. But there isn't land available, unfortunately. But we're trying to make the best omelet we can with the broken eggs we're being handed, right? So again, this is an unfunded mandate where the state is now requiring us to paint all these curbs at 20 feet up, leading up to any crossing in the city. What's interesting about that is we're going to lose a lot of parking as a result of this law, right? But instead of just painting the curbs red, what we're going to do is we're going to extend the sidewalks, allowing for more opportunities for landscaping and greenery in our city. But then we're going to take it one step further because we thought, hey, maybe this is an opportunity to create micro parks or parklets, right? So we can design these in a number of different ways to either accommodate for outdoor dining or for water capture, for, you know, contributing to natural habitat restoration with more plants and shrubs, and a number of different things that we can do. But we're going to entertain a whole process just to kind of design every single one of these into the future. More to come on that front. Here's another very important project that we're currently packaging. Um we expect to submit this grant application in the next couple of days. But that's Pio Pico State Historic Park. It's the only historic site the entire stretch of the San Gabriel River from the mountains to the ocean. Very important and incredibly significant to the history of this region, especially to Pio, to Pico Rivera, as we bear the name Pio, Pio Pico, right? So we are, uh we, we, as you know, Mines Avenue is currently under construction. A part of that project was to build a bridge in that location. That got denied by Southern California Edison. So the next best alternative was then to see whether or not we can introduce a connection point that would connect the San Gabriel River directly to Pio Pico State Historic Park, but then also build uh what they call a Class Four bikeway, or a protected bikeway, on the existing uh Whittier Boulevard Bridge. And so that's something that we're in the process of packaging now. Now, you may have seen this other park right here. Uh it's kind of like a quasi-park. Um it has shelters, it has um barbecue pits, but it's not very accessible. Um it's dark, especially at night, there's no lights. Um and even during the day, you have homeless encampments. So we've been working very closely with our Sheriff's Department, with Los Angeles County Flood Control. Now, we're gonna be working with Supervisor uh Han to convert that into a formal, official new park in Pico Rivera. So if you're coming off the six oh five freeway and you, you know, onto Whittier Boulevard, this will now be the new welcome mat, the entry point to Pico Rivera. Right? Bring highlighting the connection points between the, kind of like the uptown environment to all the, to the river and all the things that we wanna do along the river as well. This is another park we're working on. This is the Pad Park. Um Montebello Bus Lines used to own this property, or I'm sorry, the city of Montebello used to own this, and they used it for the Montebello Bus Lines, for as a bus depot. So they've, we have, uh we received a grant for a million dollars to purchase that property. Uh we purchased it about a year and a half ago. And um we now have a million dollars to demolish the existing building and then to create this new park here. Uh so it'll be a micro-urban forest. Um we're gonna introduce a butterfly garden, um a bicycle education center, a small business incubator, and a small amphitheater for the performing arts. You may have heard about this as well. One of the things that we did, uh the city um is in the process of using uh community development block grant dollars to create a small business grant program dedicated to improving the architectural facades of these buildings. Uh before, it was very much plaid, stripes, polka dots, you know. Uh whatever each individual business wanted, they, they would just do. But now we wanna see something that's a little bit more harmonious, uh that adds a theme and a character to the, to the environment. So this is the uh preliminary designs that our architect has come up with. Just to kind of give you an idea of the type of transformation we can expect in the coming years. All right, as far as next steps are concerned, um as far as our planning and implementation stages uh were broken up into, uh we obviously kicked off uh everything with regard to the multimodal plan and somewhat simultaneously also embarked on the vision plan, but we're kind of at the tail end now of the vision planning process. Um then, the city is in a transition to develop a citywide active transportation plan. We're proceeding with the Rosemead Lakewood Boulevard BRT. And then sometime towards the latter end of uh twenty twenty-five, we're gonna initiate a process to start updating our general plan, our land use element, circulation element, or mobility element, and the environmental justice element. Uh as far as implementation, we're not necessarily waiting for all these plans to be adopted. Our council has given us the green light to pursue a number of priority projects that we've identified, some of which I have already showed you in this presentation. But the next most important thing that we're doing right now is that the vision plan um is now available on our city website. It's available for review. We are actively soliciting input and feedback and comments from our community. If this vision is not aligned with what you want, please let us know. We wanna take into account everyone's thoughts and considerations. Um we certainly don't wanna get it wrong. Um so it's still, still quite a bit of time to provide feedback and input. And we certainly request your assistance to inform and educate the public about what's happening and encourage the public to provide us feedback on this plan. We try to make it as easy as possible. On top of that, we're gonna be at a number of different events um through the end of the year. So I encourage you to either join us at these other events. Um and some of these, all of these are gonna be available to the public as well, too, so. But the overall idea is that we get this project uh approved uh in November by our city council, ideally by November fourteenth. And I think, so before I conclude my presentation, Rob, can you please go to the city website? I'd just like to highlight. Yep. So this is the, the, the project website. Uh you just go to Whittier Boulevard on the city website, type it into the search bar, and it comes right up. But I wanna just show you this, because this is a 3D model that we've been creating based on that, those alternatives that we were discussing. Um but this is to just kind of give you an idea of what it could look like at the street level, if you were like walking through that environment. And these are all, again, subject to change. If the community doesn't want this type of development or this type of growth, we certainly encourage you to, to voice your thoughts and your concerns. But as of now, this is just to give you an, an idea of what uh is being interpreted in our plan. On the left-hand side, you see that a lot of those biz- businesses and buildings kind of remain untouched. Certainly at um at the discretion of the landowner, whether or not they want, and, and of course, the agreements with the existing businesses. To see if they'd like to entertain anything, but you'll see that all of the buildings that we have in white um are existing businesses. And then this is towards the north, along the back alleys. This is again what we're transitioning towards the, what we call the Los Paseos, allowing for outdoor dining opportunities and also for flexible space. Um so if we wanna ever host, you know, farmers' markets, uh art walks, um cultural events, things like that, you can certainly use, the community could certainly use the space for those types of purposes as well. And the video's available, it's live on our website, so if you wanna go through it in more detail as you review the plan, certainly welcome to. Um you could stop it now, Rob. And then you scroll down just a tad. Right? And then uh you click right there on the HWV, HWB Vision Plan. Go ahead and click on that. And then it just brings up a separate link where you can then go through the document in detail, if you like. And uh right now, the draft is at about a hundred and seventy-five pages or so. So it's, it's lengthy, it's quite a bit in there. Uh but that's all the more reason why we encourage you to go through it in detail. Uh or at least the, the, the elements that, you know, are, are most relevant to, to what interests you. Um and then with that, I conclude my, my presentation, certainly uh available to any additional questions or any thoughts, comments, ideas. Um this is the time.
Uh Director Hernandez, just wanna say thank you for uh an excellent presentation. It was very comprehensive, informative, and uh seems like an exciting time to be um part of this process in Pico Rivera. Um being mindful that we have a, a public hearing coming up, uh I would encourage the commissioners to send any um larger questions to uh Director Hernandez, but if you have any quick uh questions or comments, Commissioner Elizaldes?
You know my question already, Javier. Parking and traffic.
Yes.
In the diagrams, you're showing everything, beautiful buildings, two, threes, up to six-story buildings.
Yeah.
Nowhere in the diagrams is showing anywhere any parking.
Yeah.
Talk about traffic, any, is the analysis for parking and traffic in the vision plan itself, so we can review online?
Yeah, matter of fact, um I probably should have just called it out, because we do have, some of those buildings, we have uh parking structures integrated into the, some of those buildings. See if I can get to it really quick, just so I can provide that overview.
If you recall, one of my major concerns was on the buildings. They were saying on particular units, it was one-point-five cars per unit or one-point-seven per unit. And, and you know, my question was, what's a point-seven or point-five?
Right.
And, and these are, some of them were two-bedroom uh apartments, uh condos, townhouses, whatever you wanna call them. And that was my concern, so is, is that explained in the plan itself?
Yes, it is. Yeah, it goes into, into some pretty deep detail.
Okay.
Um on, not just parking structures, but just broadly, parking solutions. So everything from shared parking arrangements with private developers, uh publicly-owned parking lots, on-street parking, parking demand management programs. Uh but in this image here, on the top, right underneath the word "development," is where you see that parking structure. I know it just kind of blends in, if I'm going through the presentation kind of quickly, you don't necessarily see that. But the idea is that these buildings do have integrated parking.
Okay.
Uh with uh, as part of these developments. But yeah, the, the, but not to get too far into the details today.
Yeah.
Uh but yes, the plan does indeed go into detail.
Okay.
Uh with respect to a wide range of parking solutions.
Okay, one, one real quick one. On the line, the Amtrak, the Surfliner.
Yeah.
Are they still looking at the Durfee Street Station as a, a location?
Durfee Street.
There, you know, where Durfee.
On Whittier Boulevard?
Yeah.
No, no, uh sorry, so um that line that runs, you're talking about the New Underpass.
Right.
Right? On uh Durfee Avenue.
Yes.
Just north of Whittier Boulevard. So that is a commuter rail line that is shared. It's sorry, it's owned by Union Pacific, but it's shared with Metrolink, and that's where you have the Riverside Line.
Okay.
That runs three trains in, three trains out every day, um, uh, every weekday. But the one that I showed on the map, that's the south side of Pico Rivera, closer to Slosen.
Oh, okay.
It's a different corridor, but you also have, that's where you have Amtrak, Metrolink, and eventually, high-speed rail.
Okay.
Yeah, so the one you're describing is in the north part of the city.
Right, right.
The one I was talking about is on the south side of the city.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Which is the one we rode.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember. Thank you very much for all your hard work, appreciate you guys.
You're welcome. Thank you for the questions.
Oh, I have some questions. Javier, great presentation. Um I have a lot of questions, so I probably should meet. Um going back to these, this image here, I see a lot of um, um buildings, right? We have housing, I know we need housing here, but is this where we wanna go? As, is there, is that what the council also wants, to have this many buildings here in our Whittier Boulevard Street?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. Um that does, what we're showing here doesn't necessarily mean that we have to do all of these buildings, all in this one location, because we have identified a number of other corridors that also have capacity for growth. So it can be distributed throughout the um other corridors that we've identified. So Rosemead Boulevard is another one of those corridors. Um we're trying to just kind of strike a balance between what might be feasible in the market and also all the demands that we have coming down at the state level as well.
So we're just saying these are options, and if developers wanna come and build, we will give them the chance to build in that area.
Correct.
Okay. And all the other infrastructure that we currently have already, you're showing like beautification projects, updating existing buildings. Are those city funds or private owner funds?
If it's a public right-of-way, it's, it's mostly um public dollars. Uh mostly grant dollars. I mean, we have, of course, our COP funds that we use uh to make roadway improvements. Um and one of the, I, I didn't have it in here, but we currently have about three-hundred-and-five million dollars contracted out uh specifically for public infrastructure improvements. That's our capital infrastructure program, it's a five-year plan that we have right now. Um and most of that uh infrastructure improvements are prioritizing major corridors. Uh one of the things that we know, we, we can't accommodate this type of growth and development unless we address the subsurface infrastructure and enhancing capacity of water lines, sewage lines, things like that. So those are a lot of the types of improvements that we're making with our capital infrastructure program.
Okay. And for example, like the Mario's Tacos, the way that it looks right now, would we be the people who, the city would be paying for that type of development to improve, beautify that location? Or that's not what we are gonna be doing, that somebody owns that location, it's up to them what they wanna do?
Yeah, so it's a couple of things. Um one is, we provide them the avenue by which to make improvements to their respective property. Um and if they wanna take a page out, eventually, this vision plan will become a specific plan, a regulatory document that enables them to formally do that type of development on their property. Um but for example, the facade improvement program, we're developing a grant program that would support those local businesses to participate, for us to participate in helping them to develop their property.
Right.
Uh but we're not doing it in full, we're not providing, you know, we're not paying for their improvements, for their, you know, for their properties.
Yeah, and my last question. Going, at the beginning, you talked about the sports arena and the golfing center that we currently have. You're saying it's gonna go away. Can you tell me a little bit about the background of how that happened, or who made the decision? If we were part of that decision-making, who were the stakeholders, and if there was any alternatives?
Yeah, so what I will say is, um we've been involved with the project, but not the decision-making. Uh the decision-making is reserved strictly by the Army Corps of Engineers, who own, operate, maintain uh the dam itself. All that land that I showed in yellow is federally-owned land by the Army Corps of Engineers. They lease that land to us, we use that lease to provide parks and open space. And there are a number of different provisions in those agreements, one of which says if we got, if we have to use the land, we have to use the land, right? We have to essentially give it back to them. Um and that's essentially what's happening. So they have determined that the dam is indeed in need of repair um to protect us, the city of Pico Rivera, from flooding.
Yeah.
Um and so that is their sole mission and priority number one is to fix the dam. And the new dam is going to require additional right-of-way, but it's their own right-of-way, their very own land that they lease to us. Um so we weren't necessarily involved with the decision-making, but we have been actively involved with um the outcomes of their decisions. And as a result, we've been as open and transparent with the public about that entire process since we found out about it.
Yeah. Okay, Javier, thanks for answering my question.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Just, just a point of clarification. This is a ten-year project, and that's why we're going in phases, correct?
Uh no, not necessarily. I mean, we, the way I put it is that this is what it could like, look like in fifteen years or in thirty years out. But I mean, to build something out like this takes decades. Um but the promise that we have made and that we continue to make to the community is that every single year, you will see progress on Whittier Boulevard. So this coming year, you're gonna see the completion of Phase One for the Los Paseos. Uh this past year, you saw the improvements along the Center Medians.
Right.
Um in the next year and a half, you're gonna see the Pad Park come to life. Uh and, and then we're gonna be installing a number of different um signs with all the new branding for the city in the next year or so as well.
Okay.
So it's little by little.
Yeah.
Incremental phasing.
Year that we're gonna say in, you know, two thousand thirty-three is gonna be done. We're doing in phases and, and to address Commissioner Roach's question, that on this building of houses and developing of different units, ranging from two-story to six-stories, it'll be incremental.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be incremental. I mean, it'll be years before you see something, but it's not to say that it's not happening already.
Yeah.
In fact, you, you may have seen the proposals that came before your desk uh for the um, forgive me, I can't remember the name of the project, but it's the one right next to the, right next to the Durfee Underpass. Um there's a project coming online that is very much in alignment with the vision that we have here.
So we'll see it in my lifetime.
We will, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Come back in five years, it'll look a little bit different.
Thanks.
Got it.
Alrighty. Thank you, Director Hernandez, and uh thank you for everybody for all your hard work, um being involved in this.
All right, thank you very much. I look forward to continue working with you.
Thank you. Um moving forward, we're going to uh move on to our public hearings. Uh that being a public hearing for a conditional use permit, number seven sixty, a request to operate a Sky Zone Trampoline Park and find the project categorically exempt per the California Environmental Quality Act, Class One Existing Facilities, in accordance with the requirements of Section one five three oh one. And I believe we have a presentation by Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes, Chair, thank you. Um I'm introduced now, Annelie Gonzalez, our assistant planner, who was a project planner on this.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson and members of the Planning Commission. This evening's item is Conditional Use Permit seven six zero, a request for Sky Zone Trampoline Park. And the project is categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, Section one five three zero one, Class One Existing Facilities. The property location is sixty-one zero one Rosemead Boulevard. It is approximately five-point-fourteen acres, and it's designated Commercial General. The project description, tenant improvements include consolidating The project description, tenant improvements include consolidating in-lined units into one thirty-six thousand square foot tenant space for a trampoline park and also including a mezzanine for six-party rentals. Ground floor amenities include a trampoline field, dunk basketball hoops, ninja course, a taller area and concession stands and arcades. We received two calls in favor for the project. We also received an in-person letter that was placed in near Diaz prior to the meeting. Uh, they are in favor of the project, but they did have concern about um a gap in the perimeter wall located on the southern side, so there is an addendum for conditional use permit to add a new conditional uh, excuse me, condition of approval for the southern perimeter wall adjacent to Redbird Drive to be closed off with the matching cinder block wall. So environmental review, the project does qualify for a Class One categorical exemption per section one five three oh one of the state CEQA guidelines. It is recommended uh the Planning Commission adopt a resolution finding the project categorically exempt per CEQA guidelines one five three zero one and approve conditional use permit number seven six zero, subject to the conditions. Staff is available to answer any questions. We also have the applicant Mohammed Zia, the construction manager Amber Matas, and also Rebecca Nicolai, the project architect, who is on the line to answer any project-related questions as well. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, Anelli, did you go over the additional condition?
I did, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Um, with that, I would like to open the public hearing. Um, I know we received a public comment through uh the letters, but is there anybody in the audience that would like to give a public comment? Seeing none, I will uh close the uh public comment. Um, do we have any comments or questions for the applicant or anybody on the team here?
Would they like to speak?
Oh, sorry, would you like to uh, to come up and speak regarding the project? Sorry about that.
Shall I sign in here? So I'm Amber Mattis, I'm the project manager for Mozea um on behalf of the Sky Zone. Um, so I think uh essentially what was presented prior to us is uh really what we're aligning to do here uh is just to consolidate a center that um in the past has been maybe a tad bit blighted and a bunch of different businesses with a vacancy into something that is holistically um, a destination to drive to instead of drive-through for the community to have some family-friendly fun um and provide some healthy activity for members of the Pico Rivera community. Um, adjacent communities such as Alhambra, um Mo owns another Sky Zone in and has recently um been commended by the city for the new business of the year and all that they have brought to the community, both for um families and also just for the business in general. If there's any questions.
Well, thank you, does anybody have any comments or questions?
Uh, no question, but I have a comment. Your timing couldn't be better.
I'd like to know, what is the capacity? How many?
Your microphone.
What is your capacity for the, is it the same amount like you have in Long Beach and West Covina?
So the capacity is actually very specific to each location. So essentially for this, although there's um, we can go by code for square footage. Um, it's actually driven by the number of party rooms, which are timed and on a reservation basis. Um, so every ninety minutes, um they allow so many people to come through based on the party room, so it is on a reservation basis. Um, and then it's also monitored by the attractions themselves. So uh, for example, there's um, let's say two people allowed on the slide at a time for safety reasons and then the main court allows sixteen, so we never exceed more than we can hold in the party rooms or um alternating through the uh arena floor itself. So all those square footage, we could potentially hold five hundred people, um our reservation system would limit us to less than that.
So the community has to make a reservation in order to go in there?
No, there's, there is ability for walk-in, yeah, parties are res- reservation basis, um and reservations are recommended. Um, typically during the week, there's no need for a reservation, you can walk in and, and the tickets are sold on a timed basis. So if you came at, for example, seven oh eight, the next session maybe starts at seven fifteen and then you would buy a block of time um for playing. On the weekends, it's uh, there are walk-in available, um or you can make a reservation, but the, the parties are typically um a driver of the business on the weekends.
So, so you limit the walk-ins?
Um, it's, it's based on capacity, yeah, so the, the whole business model is based on having um the ability to have the parties and then room for people to walk in as well, so there is a balance there.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Just like Tommy said, we're very excited to have you guys here and have something for our kids. Thank you.
This is for Julia. This is the first project they're going to shut me up. My pet peeve is parking, they're required to have two hundred and fifty-eight. They exceeded that, they're going to have three hundred and I have never said that and I've been on this commission for twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you, I, I have no further comments or questions, so then again, we are um excited to have this business come in.
Um, is there a motion um to approve the project with the condition of the perimeter wall?
Go ahead, Esther.
I move to approve the project.
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Solis?
Yes.
Eli Saldes?
Aye.
Rocha?
Yes.
Chairperson Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Welcome. Welcome to Pico Rivera.
Thank you very much, get home safe.
Welcome.
Okay. So moving on through the uh, the agenda, I see we have some consent items for the approval of minutes of the Planning Commission meetings of the following dates. Uh, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, July third, twenty-three, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, August second, I mean, October second, twenty twenty-three, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and June third, twenty twenty-four.
Indeed, um, where our goal is to get up to date before the end of the year, so you'll see a number of these come through. Um, there have been some staffing challenges that we've had really since my arrival, close to two years ago. But I'm happy to report and um, uh happy to introduce um our latest addition, who's been here now a couple of months, Carla Anaya, who is the executive assistant to the department. And we're really happy to have her.
Board. Welcome.
So if you'll see, if you see more minutes come in, it's because we're cranking them, cranking away at them.
Sounds great. Um, do we need a, a motion to approve the minutes or?
Actually, before we uh move forward with the approval of the minutes, I just wanted to confirm that um one of the agenda items was the non-agenda item, public comment period.
Oh, yes.
Uh, for the record, to state that, that there were no public comments for that.
Correct, thank you. Um, with that, I will motion to, oh sorry, go ahead Tommy.
Pump the brakes.
Breaks.
I have a correction on the August fifteen minutes. I don't know who Commissioner Estrada is. Should be Eli Saldes throughout that whole.
I'm sorry, what page is that?
It's, it's throughout the whole uh, the August fifteen minutes. You can start at present, it says Garcia, Solis, Martinez, Estrada and Martinez.
Commissioner Edgar Estrada was um formerly on the commission, I'm not sure in that timeframe.
Is that, is that when I was?
It's Edgar.
That's when I was gone?
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to make sure, because I don't, I thought, who's Estrada? I've been replaced.
That's correct.
Huh?
But here was that minute.
It was August, August fifteenth.
Uh, twenty twenty-two.
It was in transition.
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I make a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Commissioners Solis?
Yes.
Eli Saldes?
Aye.
Rocha?
Yes.
And Chairperson Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
In talking about names, Avi, do, has the website been updated with the planning commissioners' names? The current ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, moving on through the agenda, we have a planning commission reports, Director Beddingcourt, do we have any?
Yeah, just a few Chair, um at the last, at the last planning commission meeting, uh the, the Department of Community and Economic Development had a number of items. Uh, the first was approved submission, um, the approval for the fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for submission to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Second item was an amendment to the professional service agreement with DUDAC, who is the consultant of choice who is updating our zoning ordinance. And then lastly, a billboard banking agreement was approved without front media. Uh, we will be working with them to take down one billboard along the six oh five and put up a digital billboard thereafter. That, uh, those are the three items that took place at the last city council meeting. Um, one item that we, we didn't go over regarding the Sky Zone application that is worth noting is that the entire center will be improved. In addition to the tenant improvements that the, that the applicant is responsible for, the landlord will actually um take the lead on improving the site itself, parking lot, planters, landscaping, lighting, and I, the perimeter wall. I know you heard about the addition of closing the perimeter wall to the rear, but uh the entire uh extent of it will be improved with um any broken spots repaired and repainted.
I have a question.
Yeah, Esther.
Regarding the property there, are they going to keep every single building that's there? Will the recycling also stay there?
The recycling, they, they will remain, they, they haven't shown any intention of moving. Um, yeah. That, that's, that's a lease agreement between them and the landlord. Should they choose to, you know, go in a different direction, that's, that's their, their charge.
Thank you uh for your report. I'm seeing uh no new or old business on the agenda, but does anybody have any new or old business that they would like to bring up? Yes, Commissioner?
Yes, I think congratulations are in order for Commissioner Rocha and her successful election to the Rio Hondo School Board, correct?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's official, uh starting November, I am the candidate-elect, I was unopposed, meaning that we ran the race correctly at the beginning. And um, yeah, I'll be in starting December, there should be no conflict here, we're good, but I'll be at the college board, at Rio Hondo, serving Pico Rivera.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you, Tommy.
Any other uh new or old business? Seeing none, uh if there's um, if there's nothing else to discuss, I would like to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.